Welcome. Today is Thursday, February 16th, and this is a special school meeting. Last Thursday, we were supposed to have our regular meeting, and we were snowed out. But we felt it was pretty important to talk about the budget today, so we scheduled a special meeting for that. Unfortunately, Jeff Thielman couldn't make it. He has a work commitment, and Len Carden is traveling and can't make it. Just as a reminder to the public, we have a public budget meeting on, it's on the 2nd of March, starting at 6:30. So we welcome people who are interested in asking questions or giving comments to come to that at 6:30 on the 2nd. Sorry, Dr. Allison Amin.
Can I just clarify?
Yes, please.
What it is on the 2nd, it's the budget hearing, which is a legally required part of our budgeting process. So, any, people can come to any of our meetings and ask questions about the budget, but this is the budget hearing, which we have to...
Okay, great. Thanks. So I wanted to comment that one of the things that we were supposed to do at our last meeting was to say goodbye to Diane Johnson, who was our CFO earlier, and we had a cake planned and some, and fruit, and unfortunately, we can't do that. But I do want to publicly thank her for her years of service and her dedication to the district and say that we wish you luck on your next venture. So we have public participation. I see none.
Really? You sure?
I'm pretty sure. I do want to welcome Jason Levy, who is our AEA rep, and also to say, this is going to be a fairly short meeting. So let's get right on to the budget presentation by Dr. Bodie.
Right. Thank you. This, again, this was something that we were going to present last week. Most of the information in this PowerPoint is information...
Sorry?
The clicker. We wanted to make sure you had it. Just wanted to make sure you had it.
Thank you. It's information that the committee is aware of, but I think that since we're going to be having a hearing, this would be helpful, I think, is sort of in general comments about the revenue that we have and expenses we're expecting for the FY '18. The entire budget that's being proposed by the superintendent is on our website, so anyone can go there and look up any information you want. I think we're finding a few typos as we've gone along, and we will be correcting those as soon as possible. So as we look at, one of the things we always do when we look at our budget going forward is we want to know really what are our budget priorities. That informs what we're going to do with any additional money that we might have by way of whatever source. So in looking at our budget priorities, the first priority is the retention and compensation of our faculty and staff. FY '18, by the way, for a lot of people don't know what the FY '18 means, it is the last, it's the year of June in a school calendar year. So next year is the '17, '18 school year, and we will say that the budget for next year is the FY '18 budget because the school year ends in '18. So next year is going to be the third and final year of the contract, and we have already begun talking about beginning negotiations. As you know, we're going to be doing some planning work this year, actually more research work with regard to the negotiations. What we have done in our multiple, in our multiple-year projections is that 2% has been the increase for all staff, both contractual satisfying contracts as well as staff that are not covered by a contract. And the other priority is increased pay for substitute teachers. Arlington is probably, it is the lowest, I think, in this entire area. Maybe not, maybe not the lowest, not the lowest, but we are close to the lowest. And one of the challenges we're finding this year, and increasing, and last year as well, is that we're having a hard time always finding substitutes, and we're thinking that increasing it somewhat will make a difference in that. Another budget priority as a category is to address enrollment growth and class size mitigation. And every year, we are having to add classroom staff as well as all of the support staff that is necessary. And in general, one of the things we have looked at in terms of ratios, once you add a classroom, it's really not a 1.0 FTE. It's more like a 1.6 or 1.8 in terms of all of the others, the supporting staff that's required. We also are going to have in a budget priority is our two reserve teachers. Most likely, we already know where those teachers will go, but they would be subject to what happens with enrollment this summer. Another budget priority is support for our high-need students. As you're aware, this past year, we have seen an increase of, in excess of $700,000 in out-of-district costs. Those costs actually need to be incorporated for FY '18, but even, even more recently, we have incurred some other out-of-district costs, which would be probably putting that number around $800,000. Now, because this is January, actually, it's February now, but still about halfway through the year, one proposal which we will probably want to discuss somewhat is whether we should actually set aside $1 million for any additional out-of-district placements, because as we found that the differential between where we were last February and where we actually ended up this fall was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're also looking for two FTE elementary learning specialists, a social worker at the high school, a .5 social worker at the high school, and a .5 social worker at the Addison Middle School. And the .5 FTE social worker at Addison is to satisfy contractual obligations. Administrative support is a broad category. You heard in December our elementary principals talking about the fact that they've come to a point where they really need some support. And one proposal, of course, would be to have seven element, seven assistant principals in our elementary school, but that's fiscally not possible. So what we're proposing is a more modest, more modest expansion there, and that is to have a half-time assistant principal in a few schools and possibly giving these schools that do not have an assistant principal some extra administrative support. Another, another administrative addition is the Director of Social, Emotional Learning and Guidance. For many years, Arlington had a Director of Guidance, and we have not had that position for a number of years. In fact, one of the things you'll see when we get to some charts later on in this presentation, we've seen enrollment growth over a number of years, and we've seen increases in staffing in general education, in special education. But the one category that has been relatively flat through all of this growth has been administration. When we've had administrators who have retired, we haven't filled those positions. So it's, we're, as we have more of a focus on social, emotional learning in our schools and the culture of our schools, this is a position that we feel is very important. So those are our major categories, though there's one that's not on here, and that is desktop support. We, as we expand our number of devices that we're supporting and the number of teachers that are using them regularly in their classroom, we need another desktop support person, and even that really doesn't meet the true needs. So looking at the budget. So last year, our budget for FY '17, the one we're currently in, in total was $63 million, and that comes from three major sources of revenue. One is the town appropriation, which is the main source, grants and revolving accounts. So these represent fees and reimbursements, and you have in your budget book a list of all of the, all of the ones that we have. There'd be instrumental music, athletic fees, bus fees, preschool tuitions. All of those are sources of revenue. Now, this year, when we're looking at town appropriation going into the FY '18, we are the, our appropriation from the town is matching a formula that has been agreed upon and has been operational for the last couple of years, and that is the operating budget will increase 3.5%, special education budget will increase 7%, and there's a formula for funding for increased enrollment growth. And when we went from last year to this year, we had an increase of 220 students. Actually, I was looking back from FY '12, from, since FY '12, I think we've had an increase of well over 700 students, closer to 750 students. So it's, we've been experiencing tremendous growth over these last few years. So in terms of town appropriation, this represents a 6.6% increase when you combine those various percentages and the enrollment growth factor. However, that's not the only source of revenue for the school system. Another source are grants, and if you look at the grant amount for FY '17, it's 2.0, essentially 2.4. And then you look at the assumption for FY '18, and that's $2.2 million. There is, we're expecting a decrease, and in fact, we're fairly certain of this decrease, primarily it's in Title I funding. Our Title I monies that come in actually sort of oscillate between two numbers, and it's totally dependent upon what the poverty level is in Arlington. And given the latest numbers we have, we're pretty sure that we're going to see a decrease. So that is, that's pretty much of a definite. Then in terms of revolving, another source of the revolving fees and reimbursements, one of the major reimbursements is circuit breaker. And what we're going to see next year is a decrease of $185,000. That's because of the process that we have. It's what, it's what expenses were incurred in a, in a year where there wasn't a lot of growth, and so the circuit breaker number is down. Another, another reduction in terms of income here is last year, if you recall, we took $250,000 from community education and moved it into a one-time cost of curriculum materials. That is, that is no longer a source of revenue. We are not going to be reducing the community education budget this year for that purpose. So in total, for the revolving and reimbursements, we're down about 12.1%. For grants, we're down 6.3%. So when you then combine that with the increase in town revenue, the overall increase is really 5%. And that 5% increase represents about $3.16 million, which is a considerable amount of money until you look at what needs to be covered with that amount of money. So our first priority is the retention and salaries of our staff. And if we were to take everyone that is employed here for level service, all of our teachers, TAs, secretaries, support people, enroll, enroll over their salaries next year through the contractual agreements, and, and add longevity for those that are now getting longevity or are moving between longevity levels, that increase is slightly over $2 million. We also have the assumption that we're going to need $1 million to address the known out-of-district expenses we, we have, which would be around $800,000, and what we might, and some cushion for expect possible increases. All right. So if we were to look at that and looked at all of our other increases, what we would find, if we just took those two numbers together, we're over $3 million. There would not be very much money, probably about $130,000, that we would be able to fund beyond these two major categories. So what central staff did is we went through the budget, not quite the same way that you have it here. We went through different categories. For example, teaching assistance. We looked at all the teaching assistance in every single building compared to looking at the enrollments, looking at what we have as sort of a formula for teaching assistance in terms of what everybody, everybody gets in the district, and looked at ways that we could reduce. For example, some of the reductions, and you have that sheet, might be a full-time kindergarten teaching assistant going back down to a half-time, because we have, half-time is the foundation for all of our kindergartens. They may have had a full-time this year because of the class size, but since we don't know what class sizes will be next year in the kindergarten, we made that reduction. That's just one of several. But at any rate, we made, we went through and found reductions of $730,000 from the FY '17, which in combination with the 100, roughly 130, we're able to add in about $838,000 worth of increases. Now, much more explanation of all of these numbers is in the detailed budget that you can find on the website. All right. So this is a graphic you've seen before. It's just been updated to the, to the numbers for FY '18. Just shows graphically how our revenue sources relate to each other in terms of a pie. And you can see clearly the town appropriation is the major source of revenue. When you look at this next graph, you have major categories in terms of what is spent in those categories. One thing I would bring your attention to, because some people say, well, central administration, is that just salaries? It's not. It's, it's actually a lot of things that sort of get put together in the central office. So for example, for example, I think a lot of our subs, I believe, are in there, and we do, you know, central professional development. So a lot of things that are district level will go into that. It is not all salaries. So these are the major categories, and I think that one of the things that strikes everybody, and rightly so, is that instruction and regular ed, which is the light green, is, is slightly larger, not significantly larger, but for instructional, instruction for special education. Another thing that has changed in the last few years incrementally is there is an area here where it's, it's right above the green. It's sort of at 3 o'clock where you see red. It's a little, perhaps a little hard to see, but that's where instruction, interventions. So what we have been doing incrementally, and I think that we're seeing, and I know we're seeing, the positive effect of it, is providing more support for students that need extra support in a variety of ways, whether it would be, you know, extra math, reading, ELL services, that you're going to see more, an increase in this amount of money. And I, I believe, and I think that this is a shared belief among all administrators, that this is money very well spent in terms of, one, make, helping all students be able to access the curriculum, but also reducing potential special education costs. All right. This next diagram looks at the, the actuals for, in different categories for, from FY ' '12 to the projected FY, well, to the superintendent's FY '18 budget. And you can see with elementary, which is the first set of bar graphs, that each year that that has gone up. Likewise, for secondary. Special education hasn't had the same even-steppiness as the other two. We've seen a little bit of a spike in '17 and '18 there. The next, the lowest set of bar graphs is curriculum instruction. You can see that's pretty, pretty flat, and that's basically all of our instructional materials, and I think there's some professional development in that as well. Yeah. Administration, again, you can see that it's been fairly relatively flat, and it has actually come down a little bit again as we, as we look at this. And then we have our other categories of IT, facilities, and transportation, again, remaining flat. Now, one of, one of our concerns, and I think it's something we really do need to look at in the years ahead, we're doing a little bit this next year, is the kind of support for technology that we have. We have one instructional education specialist, a technology specialist for all of elementary schools, one. I mentioned that actually at a meeting the other day, and they said, you have many? How many? So that is something we need to take a look at, and we've had a part-time one at the middle school and a full-time person at the high school. But that's, given the usage of technology that is going on in this district, that is woefully inadequate. So that gives you just sort of a visual on the, the budget transfer categories. And then going onward here, we have, I think it's one of the things that's important to talk about when we look at special education, is one of the thing, is what is, what do we consider special education costs? We are trying to, and we have done, I think, a pretty good job of being consistent with defining what special education costs are and staying with that, so we would have year-to-year comparisons. And these include grant-funded costs, legal and transportation costs, which directly support a student's IEP. It does not include any of the interventions that we do. So when you see an increase in special education, that is not due to interventions. It's not due to guidance or social work or any, unless there's a particular assignment of that social worker to special education classes. So special education is legally mandated for eligible students. Interventions are not. However, while they're not, they're essential as we help struggling learners, and I think that the data we have shows that it's certainly making a difference. But I do want to point that out because we're very pristine about how we compare special education costs from year to year. And in fact, in the, in the diagram, it's not in this particular PowerPoint, but it is in the budget book. The, the thing that you will see, which we've seen over many more years than just from FY '12 to FY '18, the percent increases in special education is, looks like a jagged, a jagged line graph. I mean, we have increased one year 14% and another year 1%, and that is the nature of So as you look at a six-year look at intervention expenses, there has been a slight increase every year, and not huge, but certainly not at the same rate as we would see the increase in general ed, which is the, the gray bars there. And as you can see, the, which one is this? All of them increase a little bit, except for, hm? I know, the...
You have a different color than yours.
Yeah. So, it didn't show up very well, but it's actually sort of a light blue. The blue is the general education. The red in the diagram you have are your interventions, and the green are special education. So general education, special education are increasing. General education at a slightly higher rate than special ed interventions, it's increasing only slightly in comparison. So the last slide here, for people who are listening, you can just go to the APS website, and it's, go to Budget Information, which is in the left quick links, and it'll take you right to the superintendent's budget, and it'll take you back many years if you're interested in, in past years as well. So that's just an overview of this, of where we are with the budget for FY '18, and the purpose of tonight is to have a discussion about all of this. All right.
Great. Mr. Hainer.
First off, I'd just like to say, the figures that I gave you a copy of, and I'm going to be talking tonight, are based on the book that we have. I didn't bring the book, so I downloaded the, what we have on the webpage. So these numbers are in conflict right now. The, the budget, I would suggest that we update that on a regular basis because the numbers have changed. The FY '17 budget is as of 12, 15, 16 on the webpage. The book that we have is January 31st, '17, so the numbers have dramatically changed. The other thing, before I start into specifics, and I don't mean to beat this horse, but looking back six years under the longevity, we've shown a negative on longevity, five out of the six years. So I would ask the superintendent to look into that very, very carefully going forward. We've talked about that in the past. Well, not necessarily over the history, whatever has happened each year, this is, we've talked about it, it should be a fixed figure. We know who it is. The number should not be a difficult thing, but in our history, on the budget history in, on our webpage, five out of the six years have shown a negative, and one year was even greater than what we have this year, which is tight. I don't necessarily expect answers for all these tonight. I just want to share them with everybody. You know, in the budget book we have, we see a difference, an increase of 285,000, close to 286,000 under the teacher aid and salary. In part of the presentation in the book, it showed that we were not going to fully fund it. We talked a little bit, Dr. Bodie talked a little bit about it, but that 285,000, even with a 2% salary increase with the, based on the figure from '17, translates into at least, I think, seven and a half, I'm sorry, 11 more positions plus. So I'd just like to get that straightened out. The summer program, the question, I guess, is that summer program related to our special education?
Yes.
Okay, so that $12,000 increase would be expected from year to year. That, that's understood. Administrative stipends has a, close to a $48,000 increase in the budget. Could you talk about that?
Well, we have some, we have, for example, I'll just give you a couple examples. We have one administrator that is covering for supervision of guidance, which we, we have two administrators doing that. We have three administrators covering for performing arts, and so any stipend that, that is in that area, we have a stipend for additional work around...
Those are existing positions. I mean, this, this is a $48,000 increase over what we currently have. So are you adding more?
I don't think any administrative stipends have changed. That's something I need to look at.
Okay.
I don't, I don't...
I'm just bringing that to your attention. So the administrative stipend is up by $48,000. The teacher moving allowance, it's still a fixed rate, that we're in the current contract, so that piece hasn't changed. There's a $3,000...
It's not a fixed rate. It's a per diem rate.
Thank you. That solves that. In anticipation, we're just looking to have the Stratton people move back. We're not looking to have anything, maybe one or two might move in a transfer, but no massive change beyond that.
Thompson.
Thank you. Solves that. Okay. Mass teachers' retirement pensions, it's the exact same for the past three years. Salaries... Salaries increase and our part of the pensions should increase. And we're all, we're budgeting 127,428. That's for 16, 17, and 18. So I'd ask you to look at that. That might show as a deficit or, i- it stayed static and I, I can't understand. I know we have pluses and minuses teachers, but it shouldn't be the exact number every year.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
It's not, I'll have to look into that.
Tuitions to other schools, I assume that's special education, with, uh, we're looking at a, a $2.2 million increase. Are these all IEP rate? At the line item, by the way, I'm sorry, I should give you 83201 is what it is.
Tuition to other schools?
Right. And, and we're looking, at, at the budget book that we have, we're looking at a, a $2.2 million increase. That's pretty steep when later on, um, we're looking at out-of-district tuition, a decrease of $186,000.
One of the things that came up today, and I'm not speaking to this particular one, but it has to do in the, in the lens that you look at a particular item. In fact, this came, Toni Mertz is, is helping, as she did in the fall, as we look for a new CFO. And a question had come up and she looked at it. It really depends on which lens you look at it, whether it's object or program, and it may really be due to the lens than it is to the actual increase. But we don't have any tuitions to other programs unless they're special ed and they're, they're tied to an IEP.
This is, this is in the budget. It goes from 5.7 million to 7.9 million dollars. That's a, that's a pretty steep increase.
Which section is it?
The line number is.
Section two?
It's six. Isn't it six, three?
No. This, the one I'm talking about, it was, in the book was section two, line 83201. Tuitions to other schools, and I, I do expect that to be.
Number again, eight?
Uh, 83201. Title, tuitions to other schools.
In section two?
Wait, section two doesn't have any number.
Doesn't have a, anything.
You need to add.
No, in my book, it was section two.
No, not this section.
So look in section, look in section seven then. Try that. That's.
Well, see, that's, that's the thing that gets confused. That's the object summary. I, that's what Ms. Mertz was saying, is that there's, you can get, you can get confused about what's in, in which, which of these categories just by going from one lens to another.
Okay. Section seven.
It's.
But that's not, that can't be the total district tuition to other schools.
No.
That's much too small of a number.
Much too small.
So that's, there's.
All I'm saying is that line increased by, by a, by 2.2 million dollars. And I'm concerned about that increase. That's all.
It, it doesn't show in this section. I, I think we're talking, go to.
83201. Just a second.
Go to section six.
It does. It is in section seven. It actually is a.
83.
No, no, it's a, it's a.
Again, you're looking.
It's like a $700 increase, right?
You're looking at the, you're looking at the, you're looking.
Between the FY-17 and the FY-18 budget, it only goes up about 800,000.
Yeah, exactly. About 800,000.
I looked at the wrong section.
Is section six.
Yep. Section six, not section seven.
I'm in seven.
Section six.
Look, it's, it's in all of these, but this is where Bill's seen the discrepancy.
Thank you.
And what is it? What number?
It's section six, page three of three.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's line 6848 and 6851 are both weird.
Thank you.
Of day students.
No, both of them.
Okay, right.
I don't see either one of those numbers in my section.
86. What is it again, Jessie?
It's section six.
Yep.
Page three of three.
Yep.
Um, and there, I think, no, it's not.
It looks like it's going down.
And 6848 and 6851.
Just moving from one line item to the other. 6851.
I don't, to, strict tuition residential?
No, that's not the number he's looking at. Those are not the numbers he's looking at. It's in section seven. I found it there.
83201.
Eight three. It's on page two of three.
Okay.
Is there, it looks like.
I'll look at that again.
Do you add those numbers together, the.
I'll, I'll look at those again.
The residential day.
Okay.
They're very similar to the other numbers. So maybe it's a moving of somebody.
Let me go back. Eight, 83301.
It might help. I, I've asked Ms. Mertz if she would come to the March 2nd meeting. I think it might be helpful for her to also just sort of re-explain all of these different lenses.
All right.
Because they do get confusing as you try to get a handle on, on different things because it's just, as I said, a different lens. And different things can be put into different categories.
I'll wait, I'll wait for that part and I'll get my figures correct. One last one. Vocational transportation.
Mm-huh.
Is that, to, why, why, why is that not part of their budget?
Well, let me, okay.
Cause it's an increase of 105,000.
Yes. We've had some increases in students going to other than Minuteman Vocational. And actually, we did for a while, and then last year we had some, um, for example, the, the agricultural school.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, here's the, here's the challenging part, though. The town has a vocational budget.
Mm-huh.
It's called the Minuteman Vocational Budget. And so only monies that are sent, expended at Minuteman come out of that. So what's happened the last couple of years is vocational education tuitions have, and transportation have come out of the operating budget, our operating budget.
Including Minuteman?
No.
No, no, no.
Well, this is, right, right now.
But going forward, we're going to have a warrant article this year that is more generally stated for voc- vocational education.
Our FY-18 budget is $5 million.
No, no, for vocational? No.
Maybe I'm looking at the.
Mr. Schippen thinks that he can.
Go ahead.
Mr. Schippen.
Okay. Under Massachusetts law, if a child wants to do a vocational program that's not offered at Minuteman or offered in the town of Arlington, they have a right to attend another vocational school that has that program. This is called a chapter 74 student. So that when a student moves under chapter 74, that has nothing to do with Minuteman. That is a town expenditure that comes out of the town budget. Now, the question here is how we're accounting for it locally, but that, and that transportation line item here is for those chapter 74 students going to another vocational school. Uh, and, which is a town responsibility, uh, an Arlington responsibility as opposed to a Minuteman responsibility.
But 5.3 million dollars. We don't have other than Minut-, we have several, and we got the agricultural school and we may have one other unique one.
They go to, the other place we have a student, I believe, this year is at Cambridge Ridge and Latin, to their voc- vocational school.
Okay. Um, let me see.
Might be that much so.
In the current form.
All right. So let's get clarity in the numbers.
It's.
Let's get clarity in the numbers next time, I think.
I.
Okay.
Going forward, again, I'd just like to repeat, the current FY-18 thing that's on our webpage is already out of sync. Numbers change in, in the month period, so we need to keep that updated if we're going to keep that on the webpage. It's going to have to change almost monthly.
I just have to get an updated version.
Because i- i- it's, the, 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 the current line is FY-17 budget as, well, on this page, it was 1115. And our book has 13117. So if, if people are going to look at numbers, they're looking, the pages are not current. That's all I'm saying, on the webpage for that one.
We should have the same dated pages is what we should have.
Yes.
I'm not sure that, we've never updated our online budgets. First of all, this is a, this is a proposed budget. It's not the school committee's budget yet. And so that's what you'll be voting on the 16th.
Right. But going forward to the finance committee and the town meeting and stuff, whatever's presented to the two groups should match what we have on the webpage. That's all I'm saying, going forward.
Yes. We should make sure that the final, the budget that goes to finance committee and town.
I made the mistake thinking tonight, I didn't bring the book. I downloaded from our webpage and that's why my, thank you.
I can, I can definitely take a look at that. Have somebody look at that.
No, no. I'm done. For now. I'll go back and.
Okay. You're good?
For now.
Okay. Uh, other comments? Mr. Schippen?
Yeah, I think one of the compelling things that are going on here in the discussion that we're having at the last meeting involved what's the appropriate rate of circuit breaker use next year? And if we follow past practice, our circuit breaker revenue will decrease in spite of two years of drastically increased special ed expenditures for out-of-district placement. In the budget book, coming into, uh, about page eight, uh, seven and eight where we're making the special ed argument, we go through the actual expenditures from fiscal 11 to fiscal 16 and have fiscal 17 projected with, with the big spike in our projected expenditure. But it, the real story is not just that, but where our fiscal 17 budgeted number was. Because the projected in 17 is, was about 600,000 more than we anticipated in, in the budget. And that if we're looking at the 17 projected to 18 budget, it doesn't look like a huge draw, uh, jump. But in, compared to the 16 actual and the 17 budgeted, both the 17 actual and this 18 budget are pretty substantive increases. And that's an important story that we, first of all, we need to be able to tell effectively when we go to finance committee. Secondly, I think that in terms of making a persuasive argument for at least the position that I hold is that we should be a little more aggressive in taking circuit breaker money to see those big jumps there, particularly above the budgeted number for 17. There, we, we should at least hold ourselves harmless on the, uh, on the circuit breaker to take less money in a circuit breaker for next year's budget, even though we've had significant increases in special ed costs for two years in a row. I think that, that there's merit in terms of the discussion to plot that out. And I think that graphing out the, the special ed with the anticipated, uh, the budget and the anticipated expenditures compared to the fiscal 18 budget would sort of be an important tool for us in terms of making a decision whether we're going to take zero additional money out of the circuit breaker we're receiving in fiscal 18, or whether we want to go and be a little more aggressive in taking money out of that. Other than that, I mean, the, the budget is pretty, pretty tight. It is what it is. It aligns to previous year's budgets. The priorities are clearly laid out. We're not fulfilling many needs or wishes. Uh, the, the real action in this thing is going to be preparing for fiscal 19 as we open the Gibbs and look at, look to new classrooms that we need to be staffing.
I mean, does the budget subcommittee want to do a motion at this time? Do we want?
No.
No? Okay. Dr. Allison Ampe?
We may meet before our next meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to know if that was on the table yet. Dr. Allison Ampe?
So, yeah, so I have some questions. I've sent, I'd sent them on last week as we were requested, but I guess the timing was such that there wasn't time for many answers.
Yeah, Diane Johnson was leaving and so maybe.
Yeah. Um, so my first question was actually addressing the same, same thing that Mr. Schippen was talking about, that thinking about the circuit breaker that we're going to receive for fiscal 17, comparing it to what we received for fiscal 16, we're actually going to see approximately 1.55 million dollars spent more in 17 than we did in 16. And that's going to translate into some additional amount of circuit breaker. And we hadn't actually discussed that before at this table, that the difference isn't just what's different between the budgets, actually what's different between fiscal 16 spending and fiscal 17 spending. And it's a whole lot bigger difference than just the, the addition over the budgeted. To try and estimate what our circuit breaker might be, I was wondering if we could find out how many children there are in out-of-district day and residential programs this year and in fiscal 16. And with that information, we should be able to at least roughly calculate what the magnitude of the circuit breaker will be. I can find the information for 16 because it's online with the chapter 70 stuff, but I don't have the information for 17. So if we could get that, I, I think budget subcommittee would like to have, it, it doesn't have to be down to the absolute, you know, single student and stuff, but we need a good sense of it so that we can do some kind of estimation.
That number I gave you at the last meeting, that was, that was the estimation, but you know, we could ask, uh, that, all that information has been done. They, the special ed department's gone through every single student and what the costs were and what the expectation would be. So we, we definitely have that analysis already done and would be happy to share it with you.
That would be helpful.
I think one of the things that, I know with this, the issue of circuit breaker is a big one as we think about it because you, you incur it in a year where you have heavy expenses and then it's, you don't use it till later. So you have this mis, mis, you know, mismatch, so to, so to speak. So we're going to not have nearly 200,000, 185,000 next year that we had this year. That's a circuit breaker because of the way we budget. That's why I've, I've said that, that, you know, putting a million dollars aside, I think is something we could look at. I'm not sure that we should look at circuit breaker. In fact, if you go to the DESI website on circuit breaker, you'll see at the very bottom what they, what they strongly suggest is best practice. And best practice is to do what we're doing, which is, you know, you incur the cost, you get the money, you bank it for a year and then you use it in the next year's budget because it gives you consistency. Now, one of the ways that has helped us as a district is that we've been able to, in those years where we have more money than we might need in, in, in special education, is we've been able to put it into a stabilization account. In fact, that stabilization account, we're going to use this year to help us with these overages. And about five years ago, when we had a year like this, that's when we were able to break the cycle. And it was, is exactly that, that allows us to handle these, you know, these just tremendous ups, you know, ups and downs that come, that we experience. And I think we need to make sure that we always, you know, budget fiscally prudently so that we have some buffers to those kind of years. And that's my concern of, of not, of not staying with what we're doing.
So I, respectfully, I understand what you're saying and have, I mean, I argued for it. That's why I argued that we go into this to begin with, back five years ago. But I think even though DESI doesn't have it written in the small print, they would also think it's, it's best practice to have a flat or very minimally increasing out-of-district tuition budget year to year. But that's not what our district is seeing. We're seeing ups and downs. And I, on, for my part, would not recommend and would strongly counsel against us dipping heavily into circuit breaker. But I think to consider using some of the excess that we're seeing this year versus fiscal 16 to basically flatten out some of the revenue, you know, the, the revenue shortfall that we're seeing, I think, is not an imprudent thing to do. I think that to not do it is effectively shorting all of our students for the purposes of maintaining a big pile of money. The reason I would not counsel us to dip further into it is that that big pile of money is helpful if we have another year next year like we did this year, where our tuitions go up another 700. That's our, kind of our second pot and reserve that, so that we don't go totally short. But I think that. But I think that we could dip into it a little bit. But to be able to calculate that, there's numbers that we need. So.
Yeah, do you want to finish?
Can I go on to my other question or do we want to keep going?
Actually, let's stick to this question first and then, and then we'll do Dr. Ready and then I know Mr. Hing.
One of my other concerns about using circuit breaker money for reoccurring costs is sustainability. Because it's not in, it's not in the base budget, really. You're using that excess and what if the next year you don't have that excess?
So in that respect, we would go into it knowing that we had done this. And if we don't have the excess in the next year, it's because we didn't incur the costs. So we have to know if we have another year where our costs go way down, that we need to take some of that money and put it into our reserve or whatever to pass it forward so that we aren't totally short the year after. But it's, it's very doable.
One question, how much money have we got so far on circuit breaker? They give it to us in periods and then whatever's left over, we get it in June.
Are we using for this year's budget?
No, how much have we got already this year on circuit breaker?
I think, I think they've been coming in chunks of around four hundred and fifty thousand.
The other thing I'd, I'd just like to share, circuit breaker is not always a guarantee. We're at the whim of, of the state. If we use it, and I understand where you're coming from and I, I think it, I'm beginning to understand the, the rationale for doing it, but with our luck, all of a sudden the state decides to only fund it for fifty percent that go in the following year and we really get hurt. I'm, that's part of, I don't trust Boston. And that's my fear going forward. And if it doesn't, I guess budgeting, looking for the hurricanes and the worst case scenario, you're somewhat safe. I don't know. I, I have mixed feelings for it. I'm slowly being persuaded to, to your side, the rationale for it and I understand that, but I don't trust Boston at all.
I mean, the one thing about the circuit breaker is that we do have at least part of the crystal ball showing right now. Because when the governor files his budget, we have a bottom line figure of what the minimum's gonna be. So at this point, we can project out to some degree of certainty that we're going to get X, X number of dollars put into that pot. We don't know what the denominator is in terms of the number of claims throughout the state, but you, you know it's not gonna get down to thirty percent. It's close to this year's number. The, the House and Senate are likely to put some more money in that pot.
They may need another raise.
But the thing, but the thing is that if, if we have an extraordinary increase in the circuit breaker that is generated by this year's enrollment, if we go into fiscal eighteen and we're using the circuit breaker money generated in fiscal sixteen, it's a very low number. So that we'll have two years of highs while we're taking money from a low. Now, I'm not saying spend out all the circuit breaker. I think that, that there is prudence in maintaining some of the circuit breaker revenue because, you know, we end up in a situation like where, where there's a big crash and it goes way down. But historically, the lowest numbers were in the thirties. And so if we're used to getting around seventy, half the circuit breakers, unless the state totally abolishes circuit breaker, we're, we're gonna get the subsequent year and we'll get the heads up by next January of what, what the situation's going to be. And because there's such an increase in expenditures over two years and we're heading into a decrease year on circuit breaker, we should at least fill that hole plus a little. And the reason why I was talking about getting more numbers surrounding budget actual on these years and why Dr. Allison Ampi has been talking about honing in on what a realistic number for the number of students and the claimable expenses are, is for us to be able to put a picture together visually so that either I can advocate for drawing down some of that money, I can make a rational decision in how much of that money I might want to come down, or I might be persuaded by the superintendent's argument based on the numbers that I see. And my mind is open on this. I have a position. I think we should go after it. And if looking at all the numbers and all the combinations lead me to a different conclusion, that's fine. But I think we really need to be explicit in these numbers and present it out visually as sort of the center point of this budget presentation because that's where the heart and soul of this discussion is. That's what we talked about last time. We're gonna be talking about it again. And we make our best decisions when we have our best information.
So, I just want to ask you, do you, do you have clarity about what budget is asking for in terms of information? Is that, do we need to get our clarity on that?
I do have, I have clarity. Let me repeat it so I make sure that I have that clarity. What you want to, what you really want is an analysis of what we think will be, what we'll bill out for circuit breaker, which is a function of students in both residential and out-of-district.
Yeah, I wasn't, when you say what we want is an analysis, I'm not even, I'm looking for a good, a real good estimate, but not, when I think analysis, I, I'm thinking down to the.
A good estimate, a good estimate.
I just wanted to make sure that we have clarity.
Yeah, we have, we have, we actually have that done. So maybe we should have a budget subcommittee meeting after vacation. I will say this, that there's, I can, I can understand where people are, are coming from on this, but I do know that there's two things that potentially could be very positive to the FY eighteen for us. And that is, there's, there is a chance this year that, believe it or not, that we may actually get a little bit of a bump in the fourth quarter on circuit breaker. That's possible. In fact, there's been hints about that. Nobody's saying anything definite. The second is that, that the extraordinary relief, I'm not quite sure when we'll hear about it, but I think it'll probably be by April or May because it has to be in this fiscal year. And if that's the case, then what's going to happen is that money that we might have taken out of this revolving account that tuition in, we don't have to. So there's a little bit more cushion there, too. Now, the, the thing about it is there's so many things that we could fund that some of these things could even wait until later in the, you know, in the summer even, for that matter. But there is one area which I think, given that I, I'm, I think that there's a good chance we're gonna get the extraordinary relief, at least some, and we may get a little bump. And to your arguments, we have higher numbers, is I feel comfortable budgeting out-of-district to actual costs right now, this moment in time. It's built in in the expectation of more expenses. And yet, and there probably will be, but we don't know what that'll be and we have cushion for those.
So, I just wanted to say, I, I do continue to worry about this budget, that it is so tight with the increase in enrollment that we will continue to expect. As you mentioned yourself, every time we hire a teacher, we don't just hire one person, we hire some other things. And that's not built into this budget. What's also not in this budget now is adequate TAs to handle potentially very large classrooms. And, and the good thing about maybe creating cushion for TAs is that that's not as much of a commitment as hiring, you know, another teacher. If you have a few TAs and there's a budget, problems later on, you know, you can make different choices next year. So those are the things that I worry about with this budget. And I would, I think, I would like to see a cushion. Last time I mentioned that two hundred thousand, if we were going to touch, it might be a better number than three hundred. It certainly, we're talking about going down this year by close to two hundred thousand. And so that feels like a more comfortable number. So I just want to throw that out. Okay.
Just to point out, when we were talking to two or three hundred thousand dollars, that's when we were just looking at the amount above the FY budget, FY seventeen budget. So that number should actually be significantly more. It's the difference, and, and the problem is I don't know how much because I know the numbers for the extra above the budget, but I don't know it for the difference between FY sixteen and FY seventeen.
Right, no, I'm talking about the decrease that we know that we're getting less than we got last year for circuit breaker. It's close, it's closer to two hundred thousand. When we talk about the revolving fee, you know, the, that.
We know what, we know what fiscal sixteen circuit breaker is going to be. They've already put that out.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Because that's what, that's what's going into, we're getting, right now, we're getting paid for fiscal sixteen circuit breaker. Each quarter we get chunks.
Right, right.
And that.
And we expect FY seventeen.
And that money, you know, it's all going into a pot.
Right.
And that money goes plunk into the FY eighteen budget.
Right. And so we expect that the FY seventeen money that we'll be getting, the expectation seemed like was closer to two hundred thousand dollars less than we're getting. That's, oh, that's what Dr. Ray mentioned tonight.
That's what, no, for what we're, what we're using in our budget next year will be two hundred thousand dollars less than what we're using in our budget this year.
Exactly. That's what I meant. Yeah. That's what she just said tonight. Yeah.
Right, because the FY sixteen circuit breaker is less than the amount that was budgeted into, I mean, the amount that's going at the FY eighteen, which is what we incurred in FY sixteen.
Right, is less than the seventeen, fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly.
We spent less.
Yes, exactly. Yes. That's how I understand it.
So, okay. So I actually had a question about the extraordinary expenses, expenses relief money. If we get that, does that count against our circuit breaker for next year? So it's just extra?
Extra.
And we, and we can still claim all of that for circuit breaker? So we get like double pay? Ooh, sweet.
It's not related to circuit breaker at all. And it's money for FY seventeen, so money that we were gonna have to take out of that revolving account? We wouldn't have to take, assuming we got equivalent.
Okay, and it, it doesn't have any effect on, I'm just, I'm amazed that they're not just saying, oh, here, we're forwarding it to you early.
Sounds like there's a catch somewhere.
It does. No, I'm serious. It, it doesn't sound like.
The state's practice.
The state has only five million dollars.
To be spread across all the districts.
Okay, so it's not gonna be a lot.
It's not gonna be, yeah.
Okay, so I'll move on from this topic.
All right, so wait, yeah.
I would like to say something about this topic. So I think that, again, I think that the important part is what are we gonna use the money for? So I still don't know one way or the other how much I'm for or against it, but it totally depends on what the money is for and, you know, how much money it is. So I think that, you know, if, if all of that comes together and we can say, you know, we really wanna, I'm just pulling this out of, you know, the list, you know, we really want that dean at the high school or we really want to give another head of a teacher to the high school or whatever. And we all agree that that should be something that we should fund this year. And the only way to fund it is through this method. That's, you know, that's, I'm kind of looking for that coming together of, you know, we really think that this should be a priority and we don't currently have the funds for it. Otherwise, you know, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of things on this list that we would like, but I mean, I think that we really have to think about which of those that aren't making it are so important that we should push them over and we should find the funding.
Yeah, go in, go in with this, Dr. Allison.
Okay, so last year, there was a big push to have additional kindergarten TAs. Do the principals understand that we would essentially be funding principal assistance, whether it's assistant principals or, or extra help and, you know, administrative help or whatever, at the cost of having more TAs in the classroom?
Yes. They definitely understand. Big discussion.
And they're okay with it?
Well, okay is, no, they're not okay with it. They're just willing to pay that price, I guess. That's the price.
What's happening increasingly is that we want our, our building principals to be instructional leaders. We want them in the classroom, you know, we don't have a formula, you have to be forty percent, twenty. But on the other hand, they want to do that and they want to be there to support teachers. And yet, there are lots of administrative tasks, not to mention discipline, you know? And having a social worker helps, but the social worker isn't expected to do the disciplinary piece of it. So they, they really get pulled a lot. And the more students you have in a building, we have four hundred fifty students, four hundred seventy students, a lot of kids. So that, that's the issue. No, they, they understand that. And, and actually, if we had more money, you know, that comes our way this year, I fully support having more support, TA support in the building. That's one of the things teachers feel they need. Totally support that. We also have to be able to get teacher, teaching assistance and Mr. Spiegel could talk to that issue. It's not that easy, actually.
It's not easy, especially for special ed teaching assistants, for some of the special programs that can be more challenging. I think if we're kindergarten teaching assistants, if we hired full-time, I think it'd be a little bit easier only because there's so many candidates who are looking for teaching positions in the elementary level or in grad school for elementary teaching or early education positions. And see it, and it has been a way in our district and other districts for teachers to get into the system and get to know people and get jobs once they become available. So I think it, there's a little bit easier to get in the kindergarten teaching assistants rather than the special program, special ed teaching assistants.
Can I add a comment to that? To, to fully fund full-time kindergarten TAs would be about two hundred thousand. I think if they were gonna put more TAs into an elementary building, I think I'd, I think a better way of doing it would be put them in as building subs. Or a, a, a building, not, you know, a building, yeah, a building TA. Because then that, that, they, that person can be moved where there's a need. I mean, we have some kindergartens that have nineteen in them. And having a half-time TA works well. We, we try to do all of the literacy part of our curriculum in the morning and do the out-of cluster, the out-of, the specialists in the afternoon in kindergarten. So there's, they're handling some of that with scheduling as well. But having more, and more assistance in the building would be terrific, particularly when getting a sub, you know, is hard. And philosophically, one of the things we struggle with is we know that embedded professional development is the most important. And what that means is you want teachers to be able to go into other teachers' classrooms. We have the lab program you've heard a lot about. And we have, and we're doing courses for instructional leadership for teachers. But that means that they're out of the classroom. And so we need to have competent people that can go in. And it's, it's probably better to have somebody you know is, you know, in the building that is a, you know, is really top-notch rather than be going on the sub pool and ASOP all the time. Now, so that's a dilemma. We know that's what really enhances and makes us move forward. On the other hand, we still have to cover classes. So that's where I think we would put, would prefer to put extra teaching assistance.
That kind of feeds into my next question, which was looking at decreasing building subs as a way of increase, as way of freeing up money. We've heard, as we just did now, that schools are having great difficulty finding substitute teachers. So I'm asking, how can we justify decreasing the building subs? And what's, what effect is that going to have on the schools and what is the true cost? Because it seems to me we would just end up hiring more temporary substitutes or kids would be in the equivalent of long hall or old hall or something. So.
It's a great point. That suggestion was not an elementary suggestion. That was a secondary.
I understand.
And, and I, I would say that'd be actually one of the things at the top of my list to get back because when we had three here at the high school, it was woefully inadequate. You've heard about security issues. We, we actually could use more because we really should be having somebody that's just literally walking this, you know, these corridors which stretch into miles and watching doors. It's. these corridors which stretch into miles, and watching doors, it's important. So, you know, if we had extra money, that would be a top of my list, anyway.
Okay, I'm just concerned about freeing up money by getting rid of these people and that we're actually, you know, that's actually a significant hit.
But then, that's the whole thing, that's the dilemma of these budgets, I was like, how do you balance the other things that you need too?
So I also have various line item things, but I've sent them to you before, right? And so we can go over those, maybe a budget subcommittee or something like that? But those were my bigger picture questions.
Yes, Ms. Starks.
All right, so my first question, I still would like, I would like a clear plan for how we're going to divvy up those assistant principals or whatever, before we just blanket fund some amount of people somewhere. I really want a clear plan of what school, who it is, or, you know, what the job expectations are, that kind of thing. Because I really want to, and I guess, for the schools that we want to put it in, I just want to make sure that those are, you know, obviously, you know, the numbers kind of bear that out. So I still want to really see something like that. I have a question about the music director. So we currently have a .5 music director, correct?
No.
We have a...
We have no music director.
So when did that happen? Because I thought we had had a half of one or a quarter of one or something.
No, when Mr. Tassoni retired, we haven't had one for a couple of years. A couple of years ago, when we actually did have money in the budget, we looked for somebody, but it was .5. We found that that would not work. People were not, we just basically had no candidates to speak of. So going forward, we realized that it has to be a full-time position. We'll give an option of having .5 or a full, but the full will be a combination of the administrative piece and some teaching. In fact, we've, you know, AEA and AAA, we've all talked about this, and we've come to an agreement that we would, this could work. So that would be what we would be looking to do. Now, in terms of, we would, we already have a .2 equivalent of money. I sometimes look at these as money, it's just money, that we could put toward that. And then we also have some needs in the elementary that we've added a few FTEs here and there just to patch holes. We could pull those together. And in some ways, a director working with the elementary works better than having people across secondary and elementary, because just how different the schedules are. But I think that we could have a full-time position, and it fits in our budget. We just would have to find the right person.
Okay, so that's why there's only half of one that you're recommending?
Right, because the...
Pull the other half from the other.
The teaching piece is already embedded in the budget.
Okay, all right. I guess, I not, I know this is not going to be popular with anybody in music, but I still have a question as to how we prioritize that over a dean at the high school, or, you know. So I guess I still want to see some idea, like, I know how hard this is, I know how many things are requested, but I don't have a really good sense of why we picked the things we did, why those were prioritized. I think that that's still something I'm struggling with, and I'm not saying that music isn't important. It's very important, it's vital to some children, but just, again, they all are way up there, and at some point, we just have to make the decision that one is higher than the other, and I just, I just...
Well, as far as the high school goes, there are ways that, ways that we're helping with that dean need. You think about it in terms of what your needs are, in terms of what needs to get done.
Right.
And by having the director of SEL and guidance, we're taking some work off of a dean, a heavy load off of one of the deans, which is going to be very freeing. We're also going to, what I would like to do, and I think this would be the choice of the high school principal, is to have a point for, another point for assistant, and then move it into a 1.0, maybe the following year, ease it in, to do not necessarily evaluations, but to do a lot of the assistant principal pieces. There's a lot of things that Bill McCarthy just gets buried with, with facilities, you know, following that leak, or, you know, it can be, and so there have been some things that he had in his job, which actually, he has in his job because we don't have a director of guidance, and that is like running MCAS.
Right.
So we took that out this year and took it, and Mary Valano's doing it as a project. So we're trying to get some of the tasks done, but not in different ways.
Right, okay.
It's not like we're not addressing it.
Right, 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 okay. And wait, I think I had one more. Oh, so then the other question I had was about the, so I asked a question about the interventions. I wanted to know if the four million was teacher's curriculum or both, and Ms. Johnson pointed me to the fact that Section 11 is all about interventions, and it kind of lays all of that out. And my question about the interventions is that I'm a little bit confused as to why things like ELL are in interventions, because ELL is required. I mean, we have to do this, whereas, to me, the difference would be that interventions are things that we know are the right thing to do, and that we do them to mitigate and help students not kind of go into special ed or to, you know, beef up support that students need. And so, and yet, in here are a lot of things, like, for example, I think that things like reading intervention, that obviously is, obviously an intervention, math RTI, but there's a lot of ELL in here, and I feel like, I don't know how much of that is an intervention so much as it's something we have to do by law. We have to have those.
We have, we do, there's regulations in terms of number of hours. I'm going to give you an answer, and then I'll ask Dr. Cheston if she wants to add anything in. The, if one could argue, it should be a separate category or in interventions. Actually, students, let's say, were level one or level two, they could actually be in a classroom if the teacher was dual-certified. So the fact that you have a school where somebody's not dual-certified, and you have, you have to have your level ones and level twos have an ELL pull-out for two hours, three hours, is that an intervention, or is that, what's required is the service. What's not specified is how you do it. And so actually, one of the things we've been looking at is trying to get more dual-certified people so we can have our students in a classroom, and then you don't have to do any pull-outs. So I hear what you're saying, I mean, and if you'd like, we could pull ELL.
Well, it's just a little confusing, because I was like, oh, wow, this is awesome, you know, to see this, and then as I was looking at it, I was just like, huh, I wonder why we put ELL in there, that's all, it's just a question.
My guess would be, it's not, I understand that it's required by law...
I know, it's kind of on that weird, you know...
But the amount of service that you given is, that you have to give is very broad in terms of what the description is, and so, you know, it reflects the choices that we've made regarding services. You could, as Dr. Bodie has said, you could argue to put it into a different category, but it is not something that's offered to everyone, and so therefore, to, in our way of thinking, it's an intervention, because it's additional assistance that a student needs because of that student's particular challenges.
Okay, that's how I think of it. I just wanted to understand, because, like I said, special ed is very clearly, you know, its own category, and in some ways, is almost like an ELL category, even though it would be very small, it would be weird, right? So it makes sense to put it into a...
Except we don't write ELL plans, like we do for special education plans. So in special education plans, we write it up, and we give a very specific commitment, which is signed, you know, has a very specific process that we have to follow. In ELL, our commitment is to the student, but there's not anything specifically that's written up as like a team meeting, and so that's why it would be more like an intervention to me.
Okay, all right, cool, thanks, that was it.
Yeah, Dr. Allison Eppi.
I wanted, I'm sorry, I did have one more question, and it is a line item thing. It's what I was trying to talk about earlier. In Section Six, page three of three, lines sixty-eight, forty-eight, and sixty-eight, fifty-one.
Sixty-eight, sixty-eight what?
Sixty-eight, forty-eight. It's out of district tuition day and out of district residential. Okay, so... There, the numbers are just weird, and I don't understand why.
Oh, yeah, that is weird.
Yeah.
That's that big jump.
Yeah, and that's what I thought you were, I thought that's what he was talking about.
In fact, that was the question I gave Ms. Mertz today to work on. But what she really needs is Andrea Campbell, and she's on vacation, going back next week.
Okay, so we're going to get that straightened out.
We're confused about this as well.
Yes, and it's different in Section Four, three of three. If you flip back to Section Four, it's, I think these should be the same numbers.
I think that's what we'll have to find out from getting clarification.
Yeah.
We'll have to double, we'll cross-check all those numbers that have to do with out-of-district placement, and whether it be residential or day, and see where it appears in the budget in the different places.
Yeah, I just, anyway, it's weird, so...
The one thing we do know is, it means it's not, if it's there, I don't want people to think that maybe it's wrong. What we do know is how much we're paying for out-of-district day, how much we're paying for out-of-district residential, and it shows up in the bottom line.
Right, and that's what, the numbers look, it looks to me like it just, some of the number, some of the balance shifted from day to, I mean, from residential to day, and I'm not sure it was intended to do that for actual purposes, so...
Yeah, because one goes up and one goes down by almost the same amount.
Right, right, and it's about, by about the same amount and stuff.
Again, I want to assure you that, and Allison Elmar's not here tonight, but I know that, working with them very closely, and Dr. Bodie as well, that they know exactly who the students are, exactly where they're going to school, and at this point in the year, exactly what the cost is going to be.
Right, but it just, if it was, if it's actually reflecting changes in student things, there's other questions I would have, but until we get it better balanced out, I'm not going to go there. So maybe if we could have an updated, the second, meeting on the second or something, because that, this is, we just need to know what's coming.
Right, so we hope to get some of the more detailed questions answered on the second. And I encourage, actually, if anyone has more detailed questions, to get them in really soon, so that there's no long period of time to...
Or next Thursday, because Ms. Mertz will be here next Thursday working with our new accountant, and so that would be a good day for them to delve into this. It could, in fact, it'd be the only day they will be together before the second.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that was my only one.
Well, I just have a couple of big picture things. I just want to say that one thing I'm particularly excited about in this budget, I know it's a sad budget, but is the director of health and wellness, I'm...
Guidance health.
The guidance, yeah.
SEL and guidance.
I think that's been, this year has been a major initiative to look at these issues of social, emotional, and with a director, with real leadership in that position, you know, with a dedicated person, we will hopefully get, you know, even better sort of processes in place and hopefully improve the situation. And it's a situation that has gotten worse for us, as it's gotten worse for many, many districts. We are not alone in dealing with increased social and emotional issues in our school system. But these are very vulnerable kids, and we've got to pay attention to this, and I'm really, really excited about this position, I say that, yeah, Mr. Hager.
Just to go along with that, I support the aspect of the director of the health and wellness. I think that is extremely important. I've suggested this to Dr. Bodie outside the meeting, the idea of making that alone a full-time position, and the director of guidance, make that a stipend position with one of the social workers or something, for the idea of organization. To split these, to have one person do both, I'm just concerned that the health and wellness may be watered down. We're all in agreement of it. I'm not suggesting, I mean, if part of the issue with the guidance director is organization and communication and things of that nature, I think it might be better served. I'm not the expert in this, I defer to that, but I'm very, very concerned that the health and wellness person may be distracted or taken away, so...
Okay, Dr. Bodie.
I agree, so we haven't had a director of guidance for a number of years, and how it has evolved is that there are organizational parts of guidance that are stipended. In some cases, it's paid for from monies that come in for, you know, fees in guidance. I would propose not changing any of that, because it's a well-oiled machine in that regard, but the person who's director of guidance has to do all of the evaluations. So that's the thing, when I said for the dean, one dean is doing all of the evaluations as is one assistant principal. So we've got that piece of it happening, as well as then somebody else does, you know, music. So, no, I would say to try to keep the organizational pieces down as much as possible to focus on, because this is going to be a K-12, guidance is always before, six to twelve, and we want to expand it.
Then, just to go forward, I'd ask us to, as a group, to ask the superintendent and the curriculum coordinator to look at this on a yearly basis, because, I mean, we've all accepted, and we're all in agreement, the need, the health and wellness aspect of that, that just an evaluation of the position, we might need to look at supporting this position with more money going forward. We've done that, I remember just coming on to the committee, we saw the value of part-time social workers, a few social workers at the beginning. It was an exciting night that night, we thought we might, some of us thought it might take a couple of years to get it, and we voted unanimously to go with social workers, and that, I think, has been very beneficial.
Absolutely.
This health and wellness thing, I think, is going to go on a similar track, and I'm just concerned, and I'd like to be proven wrong rather than proven right.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we really look closely at not overburdening that position.
Right, that's why I said what I said.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this person can be a real thought leader in terms of...
And PD leader, too.
I have another big picture one I wanted to make. I know parents are often itching to help out financially with the public school system. There's a very nice, easy way to do that. The Arlington Education Foundation is a source of many, many great new initiatives in the district. We rely on them very heavily to support some really fabulous things. So if parents feel that they have the extra money and they want to support education in Arlington, that is a terrific place to do it.
Totally agree.
Okay, anything else on budget? So we're going to have a lot more, obviously, in the next two meetings as well. Okay, so we have our superintendent's report, and we have some very big news.
We do, I have two things, both of which actually have had press releases this week. But the really great news is that we've been invited by the MSBA board to move into the feasibility study, and that is great. Dr. Seuss and Dr. Allison Eppi and Mr. Thilman were all able to be there with Tom Manager, myself, yesterday. Our state reps would have loved to have been there, but it was a really busy day on Beacon Hill yesterday, so they had to cancel at the last minute. But really, it's very exciting where we're going. The process is going to take a little bit more time than we thought, and so, early stages. Because we have had the experience recently of hiring OPMs and designers, we know what our pace is of doing that in Arlington, and it's a little bit different pace because of the process they put in place, which is, you know, they're entrusted in making sure that all the money that taxpayers pay is well-spent, and so, you know, and they've had a great track record. So what will end up happening is that we will, our first, our first task will be to get an owner's project manager, and the earliest that we would be able to actually have the appointment of that would be June 5th. And that's...
That's at MSBA.
That's marching along.
Do we have the money to hire someone that early, has that already been established?
Last June.
Good.
Seventy-six percent of our voters.
That won't be an impediment, then?
No, no, we had a two-million-dollar override for the feasibility study. And so then, once the owner's project manager is selected, then the owner's project manager actually does a lot of the work in hiring the designer. So we would anticipate if we can stick to that pace... So we would anticipate if we can stick to that pace, I mean, we could also have it early July, but I think we're aiming for the earliest possible, which is the, the 5th of June. Because you have to go before the, they only meet on Mondays, first Monday of the month, and that's when you come and present, you know, all of your documentation. But as a result, the, the summer will be spent in finding the designer, and then probably by the fall, we'll be ready to actually do the, the public input. Teachers, though the teachers have already been working on this and been meeting, they've been doing this for a while, but I think that they're, that all of their interest in this is accelerating. And I know that there's a number of trips planned to other schools, to look at schools. I know that, that planning's going on right now. So they'll, they'll be well-positioned for when we, we have an educational facilitator come in next year to do these intensive conversations to be ready to go. I think people had an idea what that was like in a, in a mini version when we did that with the Gibbs. But we will have more of that next year, which I think in some ways is better. I was concerned of this, could we get this owner's, the designer and everything done by June? But by June, you know, the energy isn't quite there for it. I think having it in the early fall would be good. So I think we're moving along. That's great. And the, the other thing is that we, as you know, we, and, and not just Arlington, but lots of schools are testing for lead in their water. And last spring, we already, I already poured that out to everyone, we did test the water, it's, it's not every faucet, but it's a, it's a, it's a sample size that is recommended at all of the elementary and Odyssean, and we found levels well below any action, which says that, first of all, the water is fine, it's coming into people's homes. What's the issue is, you know, what the age of the pipes are and what condition they're in. Because the age isn't even necessarily the issue, because you can get these linings that protect the water. So at any rate, we began the process for the very end of June of starting to get samples from the high school. You have to test when the school's in session. And then, then we were able to get some of that through MWRA, and then we got the grant, and, and then we're able to do more testing in the fall, and we just got the results. So it's, you know, we put this out right away, and, but even during the fall, when we knew we were doing the testing, we decided, not, not really quite knowing exactly what was going to be the findings, to start putting some reverse osmosis systems in. We have one in the preschool, the nurse's office, and daycare. And I think we're gonna think about some other ones as well. But right, right now, the situation is that we, we had five, five fixtures that had actionable level, so if you're over fifteen parts per billion, and some were just a little bit over, and then there was one sink that was, was considerably over. But the interesting thing about that particular sink is that after, in the thirty-second flush, the draw, they do two drawings, soon as they turn the faucet on, and then after thirty seconds, there was nothing in the, in the third one. So what, what actually happens in the high school is that people like to have colder water, so they end up letting the water run anyway to get it to be cold. But that, that's our advice right now, while we're, we're going into the next phase of testing, is just let the water run for thirty seconds. And, but anyway, it's, we're, we're moving on, we're doing what we can do. All of those fixtures are being, have been replaced, so we'll just keep the testing going.
Dr. Allison, okay.
Was this a sample, or were all, all fixtures tested in the high school?
Twenty-eight in total.
So not all.
Not all. So given that we were finding positives in that twenty-eight, are we gonna go back and test all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're gonna retest the ones we replaced, just to make sure it was fine.
Right.
And then we're testing the other ones as well?
And then we're gonna start a, a new batch as well.
So we'll keep rolling through until we've tested everything?
Right, and then when we find one, we replace the fixture.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
And that's it?
That's it, okay. Any other building updates?
Building updates. Well, Thompson is moving along. They're just, had, just asked permission today they could work on Monday, on the holiday, just to keep, keep it going. We have, we're moving forward with Hardy and think in, in the, we're gonna be moving forward in terms of moving, to, to have the construction, Tom meeting to support the addition of six classrooms. But part of that will also be looking at how we're going to handle cafeteria core space as we go forward, and we've had some estimates, and I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's the best solution is going to be, but, but will, it be part, it will be part of the project. Gibbs is humming along. We will have our first Gibbs Advisory Meeting coming up. It will be actually right before this meeting. I gotta get that out, that it gives advisory, right? We have the new, we have all the teachers. We have a very big advisory group, so we're gonna meet in here. And so we have an agenda, so that, I'm gonna get, I gotta get that out now that we have the teachers. And, and I'm sure that people will be able, not everybody will be able to come, but I think we'll have a good group.
And I know I was asked about the Odyssean Principal Search Committee, if that was, when that was gonna be formed.
Well, let me let you two speak about that.
So it is basically formed. I mean, we've asked, the, the union, the AEA conducted an election of their members at, at Odyssean, and they've selected four members who are gonna be on the committee. We have a couple AAA administrators. Dr. Cheston and myself will be there, and we're gonna look for a parent or two, two parents.
We're gonna contact OPAC. Okay, and there was talk about fifth grade parents as well at one point, is that?
That would be for Gibbs.
Oh, that's for, no, no, for Odyssean, it was.
For, oh.
Well.
No, no, was it for Gibbs? Oh, maybe it was.
Definitely.
I'm sorry, I may be mistaken.
It's like we go for the representative on selection committee. I thought, you know, probably the easiest thing to do would be to have OPAC.
Yeah, okay.
Do it.
So this is a standard type of committee, where we have members of the teachers who were selected by the union, members of the administrators who would participate, some parents, some central office administrators, I mean, that's really.
Okay.
And our interviewing, we're, right now, we're tentatively scheduling the first round of interviews on March 8th.
Okay. So you need to get the parents together soon?
Yes.
We do.
Yes, Mr. Thillman.
And consequently, the CFO search.
We are still collecting applications. We have not scheduled the first set of interviews yet. We will hopefully do that soon after break, and would put together, there are several people I know who, who have requested to be on the committee from six, four, or.
Town side, too.
On town side, too, or grants.
Town Controller, Deputy Town Manager.
Julie.
Probably a Director of Facilities. So we wanna have this be a broad spectrum of people that are gonna be working with the CFO.
Was going to be.
Oh, and we have Dr. Allison Ampe from the.
Was gonna be representative from Budget.
And we're getting a reasonable flow of applicants?
We're getting some applicants. I'm not sure, we have several.
I'm not sure what reasonable.
Did we have a deadline for the?
I think it was.
It was, it was pretty open in the poster.
Relatively, but I think I originally, in school spring, it was the end of February, but it can always be extended if we need to try to keep it out for a while.
When you go through the applications and stuff, do people sometimes apply and not meet the criteria?
Yes. I think for any position we have people, that happens.
That's true of every position we have, yeah.
Do you, I'm just curious.
We sort of screen them out, usually.
We let them know that they're.
This position, people need to know, the CFO of a school system has to be certified with Department of Education, so that, that in itself is one of the big screens right away. And, you know, one would say, well, could they be certi, could they be certifiable? But you can't begin the position without being certified.
Right, depending on where they are in the licensure process, if they're very close and they could have a license by July 1 of 2017, that would be okay.
It's like a teacher, as long as they have it by the first day of school.
Right.
If they just have it, then they don't have much experience.
Right, well, it's, they might not have much experience in a public school system. They may have other budget experience, other CFO type of experience, maybe other municipal experience. It's possible without that license.
Okay, Subcommittee and Liaison Reports, Budget.
So Budget is gonna meet hopefully sometime between now and March 2nd, depending on availability of our Subcommittee members. And also, we've been scheduling Budget Outreach. Mr. Schlickman attended, conducted one last week on the 8th at, was it Hardy?
No, at Bishop.
Oh, Bishop, sorry. And we have multiple other ones being sched, in the process of being scheduled, and we're gonna be sending out an announcement, probably ask for it to be sent out tomorrow, and then again after vacation, so people can put them on the calendars. But we've got one scheduled for Stratton, Thompson, Bishop, Odyssean, and now Brackett just came in and wants one, too, so.
So what kind of questions are you getting, or what kind of comments?
We went through the PowerPoint, and it was basically, what are the choices? Can we get a copy of the PowerPoint? Can we see the graphs? You know, how are we, you know, I, I spent a bit of time talking about how we're funded and why we have to make tough decisions. They, they seem to enjoy it. They, they, they said it was the highlight of the meeting, so I guess, you know.
I've been to many people.
I didn't wanna go and, and bog down their meeting, but they, they, they were very happy to be able to have the conversation and to ask questions.
That's great.
About process in the town.
Oh, Community Relations?
So Community Relations, both of its meetings were canceled due to snow.
Due to snow, yeah.
And so both of them have now been combined and are moved to Monday, the 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here. We are gonna discuss buffer zones, appointment to the Human Rights Commission, and the Parent Forum on March 9th. Five to seven. Yeah, well, it was two meetings.
Right.
It was two meetings for that reason. The only other thing is, I wondered how did the school committee chat go on February?
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah, we had, we had, Kersey and I had a good time for about fifty minutes talking to each other.
Town meeting stuff.
About town meeting and presidential issues and the price of coffee and the fact that they were donating coffee revenue to the ACLU, lots of good things. And then about 11:50, we had about six people show up, and we ended up chatting till almost 12:30.
Wow.
And they were asking a bunch of interesting questions. Some were really school-based questions, and others were really town issues that in, in other forms of governance would have been under our domain, like, for example, why did we, why did we sell the Crosby School for $2 million? And it was like, well, it's not ours. You know, that's, that's a town decision, town, you know, Town Manager, Town Meeting, but you want to preserve the open space and maintain the function of that building rather than have it torn down and develop into housing. So there's a preservation issue there that was part of the thinking. But again, stating firmly that, you know, we accessed that school many, many years ago, and it was under the control of the town, and disposition was made by Town Meeting. But, you know, really thoughtful things about the additional classrooms, about the rebuilds. We talked about high school and what else we talked about.
Conferences.
Oh, parent conferences, yes. Timing of parent conferences, that was.
The length of them.
Oh, that they're very short.
Especially at the, the Odyssean was.
Right, right, right.
Described as speed dating.
It is on speed dating, yes.
It is.
And whether there's any way of increasing.
I still haven't figured out a good way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of kids as a problem, yeah. So do you guys have notes that you've?
We're gonna send them in.
Okay, great, so we'll put that in the minutes for next time, great.
Cool, that's it.
Cool, okay. So we can, I mean, we were talking about how we're gonna publicize this. We've been putting on Arlington list in the paper, but we can certainly publicize this as a regular, even though it's not officially a meeting, I mean, we might as well, I mean, that.
I think we should post it just.
Yeah, the more we post it, the, yeah, I think we should do that in the future. So you have the dates, is that?
It's the first Saturday of every month, but I can remember to send you an email, Karen, as well, when I do my, hey Kathy, can you send out a parent email? Hey Jennifer, can you post this? Hey Advocate, can you put this in your paper?
And then at the end of this year, we'll make it, we'll discuss about whether we want to continue this, because this was sort of a trial thing.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know, have you made a schedule for the rest of the months, or?
Yes.
Who's on, who's up next?
Good question.
It might be.
I might just post it with one.
You don't? Yeah, that sounds good, that sounds good.
All right.
And I wouldn't put the people, because we.
February 4th.
Yeah, it could change.
So March 4th is, right now, Bill and Len.
Good, good to know.
You wanted, you wanted to switch dates with me, and so.
Yeah, you switched April.
Okay, that's right.
Took your other one, so.
So March 4th?
So April 1st, I believe is.
March 4th will be the next one? Yeah, March 4th, April 1st, May 6th, and June 3rd.
There we have it.
April 1st is Election Day.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, do you wanna do it on Election Day?
Yeah, I, there's not much to get to.
There's not gonna be a big crowd at the polls, sure.
So are the, is it closed?
There's nobody running against us.
And nobody's running against.
Any of these.
Like only four or five.
Wow, that is awesome.
Some of the town meeting positions are hardly contested.
Oh, that's really great. That's really good to hear.
We, we should also make sure that we touch base with the owner of Kickstand. This is a very busy time in, in, in the store. We had trouble getting a table to begin with, and the owner came by and said, you know, we love having you here, but, you know, let's get this on the calendar and let's work around her needs as well.
Okay, so we should talk to them.
We, we don't wanna be costing her.
Absolutely, right.
Business or money. We wanna be enhancing it, bringing people in.
Right, right, right.
We bought lots of coffee.
Oh, yeah.
And presumably, some people are showing up just to see you guys, and so, you know, therefore buying things, so. But yeah, we should talk to them.
I was highly caffeinated by the time we got done, yeah.
Excellent.
So you didn't talk.
Well, I'm there one, at least once a week, so maybe I'll.
You talked a little bit more than usual?
Yeah, I mean, it was 10 o'clock, I wasn't highly caffeinated, but by the time, or 11 o'clock, I wasn't highly caffeinated, but by 12:30, I was.
Does anyone wanna speak to Facilities?
Nobody wants to talk about district accountability, curriculum.
Okay. Oh, District Accountability, does anyone, yes, District Accountability, sorry.
We received no feedback of modifications from the last meeting, so I guess we're moving forward there. We don't have plans for another meeting, but I think we'll probably end up doing one after vacation.
Okay, and I know we still have it on the agenda to talk about the superintendent goals. That was, we were supposed to talk about last time.
Right.
Jeff, Mr. Thillman asked that we defer that decision, discussion until he was able to be at a meeting, and so we're gonna push it to the next one.
Did I misunderstand part of the thing? I thought the Chair of, Paul was going to start the, start a procedure with Kathy. Are we gonna do the discussion first?
That's for, I mean, for the next year.
The next one?
Yeah, that will, that will have to happen whoever's Chair of that committee, right? So it's, it's the next chair.
Okay, so we're gonna, my only concern is that it goes farther and farther, and basically the time.
We were behind the times last time, and we should try to get.
But the time officially starts from the end of the last evaluation, which is November. We're already three months into it.
Yep.
Now we're talking five months into it.
Yep, so we should get this all done by June.
It's gonna be awful hard for Dr. Boddy.
Yep, yep.
For what?
Well, I mean, if, the goals for the upcoming, the next year, will be halfway through the year.
We want, we wanna try to get on the schedule that we, that they're established by June.
That's all.
Yeah, 'cause the goals for next year establish.
Yeah, so whoever's the Chair of that committee has to be in charge of that, yeah. Okay.
Who's on first? Okay.
Okay, so Facilities, nothing, Policy and Procedures?
We're waiting for Mike Gilbert from MASC to contact Karen to start the procedure of updating our policy book. I will be connecting with him to have him come out and explain the procedure and the Subcommittee's role in this procedure going forward.
Okay, and you got the, I know there was an email from Mr. Gilbert.
Right.
About materials that he needed.
He's already connected, but.
He's gotten it, okay.
He hasn't set a date yet, has he?
No, he's supposed to get everything together.
Okay, but he's coming out. Okay, but he's coming out to talk to you.
He has to be hard copy.
Right, okay, so, and we do not, we ended up canceling a meeting for today because we really weren't ready to go forward, so, and we do not have one scheduled as yet. Once I contact Mr. Gilbert, for him to come out and talk to us, I'll set up a doodle with the Subcommittee.
I mean, there were several other things on Policy and Procedures, were there?
One of it was getting it clear where we are on the student activity fee.
Right, and then the evaluation, we wanted to.
Right, but that's all interconnected with the goals and stuff like that, so, I mean.
Okay, okay. School enrollment task force, is there anybody who wants to join?
So the only, I mean, we had a meeting, and the outcome of that meeting was that we agreed that we should include the cafeteria redo as part of redoing Hardy.
Right.
We talked about three, there were kind of three, kind of first goes at what that might look like, but we kind of sent them all back to the drawing board and said, we'd like to see some other layouts and things. So we didn't really, you know, agree that any of those were necessarily good, but that we really did have to fix the size of the cafeteria in some way, and that that should be rolled into the.
Right, but we may not have the budget.
We, we also had Ms. DeFrancisco, who's the principal, we asked her a lot of questions because she's the one that's going to have to live with it.
Right.
And she was very responsive, so I had to commend her to the superintendent.
Okay, Legal Services Review.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Gibbs Committee, so we know we're having a meeting, you're on the Gibbs Committee, the meeting, right, is that?
I have not heard of any meetings yet.
Okay, so, I guess, so.
We are having a Gibbs Advisory Meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So Ms. Starks needs to be on that list, because she is the school committee representation.
Oh, good.
Of the Gibbs, that's where we discussed that last time.
March 2nd.
Yes.
March 2nd. At 3:00. Can that work?
Can that, can you get there so early?
I can certainly try. I will have to swap my after-school, but I will, can see if I can do that.
Warrant Committee.
We better get a paper.
Other Liaison Reports. Yes, Mr. Hainer?
Dr. Allison Ampe and I went to the EDCO meeting, there was no meeting, because we were the only two that showed up.
Oh, no.
It was, it was, it had snowed, and the roads were a little.
Oh, it was the ice day.
But, but Dr. Ampe and I trudged out, we got the.
Were there snacks at least?
Yeah, we got the snacks.
Okay, good. Okay. Announcements, Mr. Hainer?
I have two. I asked Karen to send out a notice to the rest of the committee, Medco Lobby Day will be March 14th, excuse me, 9:00 AM, we'll gather in the nurses' hall, and at 10:45, we're going to speak to our representatives, talking about increased funding and getting Boston to pay a better share. They get a, they literally make money on us. And the other thing, the Polo Plunge was a success with over $55,000 raised. It cost 60 cents for one polio inoculation, so that translates into, just from this district alone, for Rotary, is 91,000 inoculations. Three members from the Arlington Rotary plunged, and we earned over $1,500. That money's matched with, by the Bill and Melissa Gates Foundation. And for those that care, the wind chill was 29 degrees. Up 14 from last year, but it really didn't, didn't matter.
Didn't help.
But it was, it was a fun time, for good cause.
And future agenda items? Yes, Mr. Hainer?
I would ask that the Board discuss Article 19, which is the appointment of the Town Treasurer. That alone is not directly related to us, but it may be tied, we need to do a little bit more investigation, I'll be happy to do it, to see if it's related to the DOI report. If it is, that does have impact on us. So I will bring that back for the next meeting to see if it does, if it's just the Town Treasurer, it doesn't impact us directly, and I'll withdraw that. But it's Article 19 for the town meeting.